All right, we're gonna call the special meeting of the Topeka County Board of Supervisors for February 9th, 2016 to order.
Thank you. Better? If you would please join me in a salute to the greatest flag in the world.
At our Board of Supervisors meeting on January 5th, 2016, Supervisors Rodifer and Gray recuse themselves due to conflicts of interest. This special meeting is pursuant to the Brown Act and public comment is only allowed on the items listed on the agenda. Will the clerk please read our agenda item?
This is a public hearing to consider CDDG Columbia LLC mitigated negative declaration for site development permit, site development permit, conditional use permit, and indemnification agreement.
Before we start, I want to thank everyone for participating this evening. This is our democratic process working at its finest, and it's important that everyone who wants to speak has the opportunity to do so, and that we are respectful of the different opinions that will be shared tonight. Once we open the public meeting, we will hear from staff and the project appellants, each for up to 15 minutes. After the board has had an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the opponent, we will open up the public comment process. Anyone wishing to speak will have three minutes. Any unused portion of that time cannot be transferred to another speaker. During the public comment, we will hear from project proponents, project opponents, neutral parties, and then rebuttal by proponents and subrebuttal by opponents if it's... The public hearing will be closed and the board will deliberate. Ms. Shane, staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm Bev Shane, Community Resources Director. This evening, we are here to consider an application that had been submitted by CDDG Columbia LLC for a site development permit, SDP 14-003, for the construction of a 9,100 square foot retail commercial building, a five-foot-tall, 32-square-foot monument sign, and a 40-space parking lot. The proposed tenant of the commercial building is Dollar General. The applicant has also requested conditional use permit, CUP 14-012, to allow 230 square feet of signage for the business. The signs include two attached 97.5 square foot signs, one facing Parrot's Ferry Road, and the other Hauser Lane, and one detached 32-square-foot monument sign. This project is proposed on a 1.4-acre parcel that's located at 22345 Parrot's Ferry Road, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Hauser Lane and Parrot's Ferry Road, locally known as the Star Intersection. The project site is ZONE C1DMXAIR. What that list of alphabet means is that it's general commercial zoning, design review, mobile homes excluded, and within the airport influence area of the Columbia Airport. I want to comment that under the general commercial zoning, retail sales is a permitted use. Now, that's why a use permit is not required for the commercial building that is permitted. The site development permit is a discretionary entitlement that is required by Chapter 17.68 of the Topeka County Ordinance Code that requires this type of permit for commercial development. And so, again, because it's discretionary, your board does have the ability to determine that the project is not consistent with Chapter 17.68, or with the design guide for Columbia, because this is a design review area, or with the Columbia Community Plan. In processing this application, we do early consultation. We send out letters to adjoining property owners and advisory agencies, and others who express interest in these types of projects. Through that process, we received a petition with 160 signatures stating that they were opposed to the project. We see many letters stating opposition to the project, and we did receive some letters also in favor. Through that process, we reviewed the project site, which at this time is vacant. The site has formerly housed a service station, and there is a foundation on the site that remains from that business. A few years ago, Letty's fruit stand was also on that site. At this time, however, there are no businesses. The project site is within the Topeka Utilities District Service Area, and water and sewer services are available to the site. As part of this project, we determined that there were potential impacts on such issues as traffic, so the applicant hired Katie Anderson Associates to conduct a traffic study. There were also concerns about cultural resources on the site. After all, this is Columbia, one of the most historic areas of the county. An archaeological study was prepared by ASI Archaeology and Cultural Resources Management. Through the process of preparing these studies and analyzing by staff, we did prepare what is known as a mitigated negative declaration. That process is through the California Environmental Quality Act, and what that means is that we determined that although the project did have the potential to create significant impacts on the environment, conditions of approval that are before you this evening for your consideration would reduce those impacts, or the term mitigate those impacts, to a level that is less than significant. As such, staff has prepared the mitigated declaration for your consideration. As far as the secret process, the mitigated negative declaration was made available for the 30-day public review period. We received many, many comments, which we have provided responses to each and every comment. That's the reason you have an agenda package that is in the neighborhood of 700 pages. We have received comments on the negative declaration and on the project, as I mentioned, concerns about traffic, not just for the cars at that particular intersection, but also pedestrians. There is a lack of sidewalks, and there are concerns, especially with this particular school being here, of children trying to cross the Parrot's Ferry Road and otherwise walk along the road to go to the store. There were concerns about the design of the project itself. The original design was the standard Dollar General building. The applicant has redesigned the project to incorporate elements from the Columbia Design Guide. They have modified the length of the building by breaking it up so that it looks like small buildings rather than one large building. There are concerns about the landscaping and the size of the signage. There are concerns about the economic effects that this project would have on other businesses in Columbia. But the most common comment that we received is that the project was simply not compatible with the historic character of Columbia. And one of the reasons cited very often was that the scale of this building, although not large for a commercial building of 9,100 square feet, is larger than most of the other commercial buildings in Columbia. So, again, that was an issue that was raised by the public. As part of this project, in preparing it for the Topeka County Plan Commission's consideration, staff worked with council to prepare an indemnification agreement. So that is the fourth item that's before you this evening. The indemnification agreement between the county and the applicant would require the applicant to defend the county and pay for any expenses related to litigation that might ensue based upon your decision. The Topeka County Plan Commission considered this project at a public hearing here in Columbia on December 16th. At that meeting, there were over 200 people in attendance. The Plan Commission heard seven people speak in favor of the project, and they heard 61 speak in opposition. After deliberating, the Topeka County Plan Commission did deny the project on a vote of five to two. The Plan Commission is a decision-making body, according to the Topeka County Ordinance Code. However, as you are aware, Chapter 17.68 of the Ordinance Code allows decisions of the Plan Commission to be appealed to your board. This hearing was scheduled this evening for your board to consider the same project that was heard by the Topeka County Plan Commission. The project has not changed since that time. The appeal filed by the applicant, Joe Dell, on December 22nd stated that they disagreed with the findings of the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission had found in its denial that the project is inconsistent with the Columbia Community Plan and the Topeka County General Plan because the proposed building is not small in scale compared to other commercial development in the Columbia area. And as far as denying the conditional use permit, the Plan Commission had found that the project is inconsistent with Policy 15.8.4 of the Columbia Community Plan and the Topeka County General Plan because the proposed signage is not compatible with the historic character of Columbia. They also found that the proposed project is inconsistent with Columbia design guidelines because the signage should be small to conserve the architectural style of the Columbia community. Those findings are in your agenda package for your consideration this evening. Also, however, there are findings that your board, after conducting the public hearing, decides that you want to approve it. Since the Topeka County Plan Commission's hearing in December and scheduling this hearing, we have received numerous correspondence about the project. That correspondence has been forwarded to your board. Most of it was received via emails. We received communication from Lynn Lewis, Norm Ivy, Pam Ivy, Larry Hall, Kendra Matheny Neff, Jan Smith, Phil Reese, who talked about procedure he and others were used tonight to make their presentation to your board, Mary Brown, Diane Nessie, an anonymous letter, Edward and Beverly Brown, and Janice Nelson. And then, late this afternoon, we also received a letter from the law office of Donald B. Mooney. In his letter, Mr. Mooney has raised issue about the appeal itself and whether or not it was appropriate to hear the project because the applicant did not pay the appeal fee. Your board has already discussed this issue. Council has rendered an opinion to you that the hearing should proceed. As far as the fee is concerned, as you are aware, the applicant paid the county, deposited over $1,000 with the county for any costs associated with conducting these off-site hearings by the Plan Commission and your board. The amount of money deposited far exceeded the appeal fee, and the appeal fee has been transferred from our holding account into the county treasury, and the appeal fee has indeed been paid. The one thing I want to mention is that this evening, we were handed a new petition with 240 signatures, which I'll give to the board chair. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to answer your questions. With me this evening are the project planner, Alex Dilbert, Deputy CRA Director in Charge of Roads, Duke York, and Deputy County Counsel, Carl and Derivdaw, and they've all worked on this project. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, no questions. We'll now hear from the project proponent.
I think I picked it up that time. Nope, never mind. Came unplugged. There we go. That's okay. We don't...we can turn this...it's...y'all have it. It's just a bigger picture of the actual site plan to talk about. It really is as a tool for anything that might be...okay, great. It's there. Do we have any lights at all over here? That's okay. It's okay. We'll...if we need it, then we can hit the lights. If not, you guys have the site plan in your packet. It's really more for visual, for talking points on the traffic study. So, I'll start. My name's Joe Dell. I'm with Cross Development. I'm here tonight on the appeal of the site development permit and conditional use permit for our proposed development, which is a 9,100-square-foot retail building on a commercial zone piece of property. First, I want to thank supervisors for taking the time tonight to hear the appeal. I know it's a part of the democratic process, and I appreciate it. It's, as Bev was saying, it's something we all get to take part in. And at the end of the day, you know, respect the process. You may not agree or disagree on certain things, but that's why we're here, is to talk this out. I wanted to start by saying that the county's done a great job, county staff, on creating the packet as far as the mitigated negative declaration. We reviewed all of the conditions of approval that were supplied and agreed to them. I wanted to take the time tonight to not go over the entire project with you because you have the entire packet there in front of you and take a lot of time doing that, but to use my time, one, to address a few just, I think, main points that Bev brought up, and two, to have the opportunity for Ken Anderson to speak on any traffic-related or traffic mitigation issues that we may have in regards to the project. So, we purchased or are under contract for this piece of property. It's a zoned commercial, and your packet shows that pretty much all the land around this piece of property is zoned commercial. I have a feeling that the general plan was designed that way because this corridor was planned to be the main commercial corridor for the area of Columbia. So, we identified this piece of property as potential development. So, the proposed development is a 9,100-square-foot building. It's a pre-engineered metal building, as far as it's a metal frame. That's all that's from the two elevations visible from the road. That remain metal is the two unseen sides of the building, and you have that in your elevation packet there as well. The initial design, Bev's correct, did not meet the design guidelines of the Columbia area. Wholeheartedly agree with that statement. But I do feel, after nearly a year of working with Alex and the county and reviewing the Columbia design guidelines, we've come as close as we possibly can without very specific, this is what you need to do to make the building fit in Columbia. We've added, based on meetings early on with a few community members in Columbia, we were suggested to add the iron door look, add red brick, add certain features of awnings all the way around the building to make it fit more like it looked like it belonged in the state park. Our intent was never to make the building look like it belonged in the state park, but to actually just make it fit within the design guidelines as best we could for the Columbia design guidelines. So, we feel we have. So, there's a lot with the building. I understand the size is really the main reason we're here. Over 6,000 square feet requires a site development permit through the county of Topeka. If the building was 5,999 square feet, we wouldn't be having a public hearing on a site development permit, is my understanding. So, I know this process is in place, and Topeka County has approved site development permits for very similar structures in rural areas. I can tell you that the reason we picked this area, there's a couple reasons. One, there's a large economic factor that goes into play here, and I don't think it's been addressed enough or enough attention's been given to it. We've done multiple studies in multiple counties, and all throughout California, Trinity County, Lake County, Mendocino County, economic studies by economic people who understand and basically essentially get to the point where we...the county itself and the rural areas and incorporated areas are losing sales revenue to the incorporated areas of counties. Topeka County is one of those. Those figures range in the tens of millions of dollars going into the incorporated areas who are getting the tax revenue and using that in their own cities for services and goods for the people of that city. By coming to the rural areas of Topeka County and other counties throughout California, the county has the ability to capture lost sales that would go in other areas to incorporated areas within the county and so...or within the city. So, one of the biggest benefits of the project is sales tax revenue for Topeka County. This is one store. One store, unfortunately, we don't know the actual sales volume of these stores. We don't...aren't privy to that information, but we can estimate them to be around, based on economists' reports of other counties and their studies of other areas, roughly between 1.3 and 1.8 million dollars in annual sales. And that's one store, so that gives a good boost to the local, to Topeka County, in which they can turn around and use those funds for services in rural Topeka County versus in incorporated areas like Sonora or Jackson or any other incorporated areas. So, I'm not going to spend a...that's a big piece here, and I think it's missed. I also think that part of this whole process is...we're not...Dollar General's on trial here. I know there's a proposed tenant, and I don't work for Dollar General. I work for Cross Development, and it's going to come out, and everybody's going to have their piece to speak, and I wholeheartedly think everybody should have their opinion and should speak what they feel. But at the end of the day, it's the supervisor's job to decide, is a conditional use permit for the sign, and is a site development permit acceptable, given the zoning, given the zoning laws of the county? And again, I just have to look back to the other unincorporated areas that have already been approved, and the board has decided, yes, there are site development permits that allot for 9,100-square-foot buildings to be built in an area in which buildings are...where the site development permit limits, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, at 6,000 square feet, I think, is the limit for site developments that require the permit?
Yes.
On a minimum? Okay. So, mistaken there. But there is shown in Jamestown, in Salisburyville, that the board does have the ability to approve site development permits for these stores. So, when it comes to the actual mitigated negative declaration and the comments, I guess the main comments or points that were brought up is traffic and safety, a big concern. That's why we hired Katie Anderson to do a traffic study. That's why he produced a report, which I believe you have. And the site plan shows the extent of the improvements that we are going with on, based on Katie Anderson's study or Ken Anderson's study. The initial site plan, which you probably haven't seen or won't see, only had us doing minimal improvements to Hauser Lane. That was based on initial comments from the county. Soon into the project, we realized that a lot more had to be done, and so that's why Ken Anderson was hired, and we have adopted a site plan that encompasses all of that. So, it's widening the roads, widening the turn lanes, adding shoulders, adding sidewalk across the frontage, improving the turn lanes so that you can get out of oncoming traffic and make your turning movement easier and safer. And so, that's a big part of how we are mitigating a lot of the traffic issues there. And we also have agreed to pay into the traffic mitigation fund and our fair share of future complete realignment of the Springfield Road and/or Springfield Avenue and signaling and other items that will occur down the road. And about $35,000 is the dollar amount we're paying into that fund as our fair share of those improvements. The other concern is, and I guess the biggest one, I have a little time to talk on it, is the actual...we don't fit the Columbia design guidelines or plan. And again, I would say, yes, originally, we did not fit the design of the Columbia guidelines, but following comments from citizens that we met with, following comments from the county themselves, the county director or the planning director, and Alex, the planner, we do feel like we have met, as far as design, the actual look and feel of what the design guides are trying to get Columbia. And again, future growth, because there's nothing in Columbia that will look like this building for new development. This is the first stab at new development. There was a self-storage place that was built in 2009, 2010 that is closer to the state park, but on the north side of the highway, Parrot's Ferry Road coming in. And, you know, it's completely wrapped in metal, and it's...it looks like a metal building. And so, I understand when it comes to commercial development in Columbia, this is the first attempt at a new building, I think, that's on this Parrot's Ferry corridor where it's all zoned commercial. So, we understand there's a learning curve. We understand there's...working with the county to meet the guidelines, and we do feel we have. So, I want to give you some time to ask me questions. I hope you have some. I do have...well, I'll answer your questions as they come up, and then if time allows itself, maybe Ken can answer any questions you may have as well. But I don't think the questions are timed. I could be wrong. I don't think it's...so, thank you for your time, but I would urge you to reconsider the denial of the conditional use permit and the site development permit. I feel that we do meet the design guidelines as best we can, based on reading them and trying to make them adapt to the area. But again, it's a precedence. We're setting the look for what Columbia could look like in the future for future development as well. And so, the building, the look and what we've been instructed to do, I think, fits well within the current area where it's at. And so, I would appreciate your consideration in approving our appeal and reversing the And so I would appreciate your consideration in approving our appeal and reversing the denial of the conditional use permit and the site development permit. And I will answer any questions you have.
At this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, we're on...
Do we take questions from the public, or is it strictly from the board?
Sir, I actually think that information was in the beginning of the packet. And so I would appreciate it if you would address that during your comment. And that is, that is the next phase here.
I'll be happy to answer any questions that come up during the public comment, for sure.
And forgive me, folks, there is a very defined process that we have to go through. We don't establish that process, but we are obligated to follow it. So with that, we are going to open up the public comment. And I would remind everyone that public comment will be held to three minutes and would really request that we respect one another and remember that everyone is here to voice their opinion. So with that, project proponents may come forward. Those speaking in favor of the project. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Robert O'Connor. I spoke at the last meeting. My name is Robert O'Connor. I spoke at the last meeting. I would try and be brief. I imagine quite a few of the things were covered by the gentleman who preceded me. I'll try not to be redundant. I would like to address the matter of the red herring that got dragged in front of the planning committee of all the yellow sashes and the costumes and things like that, representing the opinion that the historic flavor of Columbia would be destroyed if the store was established. I would gain say that the, none of the 49ers flew in on the airplanes that come into the airport, which is in the same zoning district. I believe that we've had progress in numerous ways. There's an RV park closer at the Marble Quarry to the historic park than is this school. And the school, in the newspaper today, was stated to be a quarter mile away, though it was said the store is going to be close, that the store is further than the school. The matter of the historic flavor, you know, I mean, we have toilets that flush now. The 49ers didn't have those. Progress is part of what brings this area into the forefront of the community, the overall county community. And I think that having the red herring of, for instance, the petition drawn about destroying the historic flavor, you know, I mean, it's like a mom and a mom store, and a mom and a pop store, all of this. The overriding concern, as I see it, is that you, the board, represent, in effect, like the United States Congress is made of state representatives and state senators that come representing their areas, though there's gerrymandering and pork belly bills and things like that. When it comes to something that represents the whole, the entire nation, at that point, the representatives come together and make a cognizant decision to take America out of the past and bring it into the present and in the future. And I believe you have the opportunity to do that here. Though you represent your districts, you represent all the county citizens, these people deserve equal opportunity and equal access. I'll waste 22 seconds. In closing, though, I'll say this. The sidewalk needs to be built. The kids are dodging traffic all the time, store or not. Thank you.
Yeah, if you are a project proponent and want to just come on forward and kind of form a line down the center, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Heidi Fuller. My husband and I own a parcel that's a couple doors down from this proposed Dollar General, or proposed construction. And I'm appalled at the arbitrary and capricious nature of the decision made by the planning It was a referendum on the tenant and not the building. The building is beautiful, and I think it will add to our community. And as one of the very few private property owners along that corridor, I'm very concerned that a developer can put as much time and energy and effort into this project as this developer has and still be saddled with the community opposition to what, in my opinion, is purely opposition to the tenant and not the building. The building will infill an extraordinarily blighted parcel. It won't be a new development in a greenfield, which satisfies just about every plan, the airport plan, the smart earth plan, and every other plan that the county has spent a lot of time and money developing for our county. It'll be smaller and shorter than the existing buildings, even buildings within the state park itself. There was a lot of discussion about damage to the stature of the state park. One of the park officials brought up the issue of delisting, which seemed to concern the planning commission. I would like to say, in the intervening period, I have done some research, and I have not found one instance, not one, at the federal or state level, any other state, that, of a park that has been delisted for a change of character of the community. In fact, a few have been delisted at all. There was concerns that this was a chain, but we've had chains. What is currently Claude's Market was a Curves for Women, a national chain. We've had a Frosties here. And somehow, the state park has survived and thrived. The small businesses within the state park, the candy shop, or outside the state park, El Hardin, they themselves are chains, small ones, but economically healthy and growing businesses. And that's what we want to see come to Tuolumne County. There was the issue of the traffic. Any successful business, regardless of what goes in there, will increase traffic.
Okay. Okay. We'll run the meeting, and again, I'm going to ask for respect. Thank you. I have a quick announcement. There is a red Cadillac, license plate 7AF2120, that is blocking a vehicle that is trying to leave. All right.
Sorry. So I'm one of the owners of the property, and I've been owner for the last 15 years. We actually had a business there during like 15 years. It was a very busy location. We were the owners of Letty's Fruit Stand. You know, for us, we never felt that there was actually an issue in traffic, you know, exiting or exiting or during school hour, during drop off. We never actually saw that that was ever an issue. In terms of the sidewalks and pedestrian safety control, we do agree that that is an issue that needs to be addressed, regardless if there is a general builder or not. One of the most personal advantages of the business in the local economy is the boost of employment in the region. Businesses pay significant portions of taxes in the United States, including income tax, property tax, and employee tax. Having more businesses in the local economy can boost income for local governments, bringing in more money for repairing roads and developing schools or improvement in public services. If your argument is to keep Columbia historic, then you are prohibiting any owner of the property to make any use of the property. Furthermore, the Pepper Mill Cafe has shut down various times, has been opened multiple times during the time, as being an owner, that we've seen in the property neglecting any historic aspect of a property. Friendly competition will cause, will cause the overpriced markets in the surrounding areas to reevaluate their current sell prices and not overcharge their customers for the convenience of not driving into Sonora. We saw a Yelp review for the R&amp;L market that quotes, "It's worth to drive extra two miles to the Arco in Sonora because everything in the minimark is overpriced, either 50% or 75% higher." Finally, by allowing Dollar General to build its store, the current drug use, property damage, homelessness that has been an issue there since we've been owners of that property can be reduced or probably even be eliminated. Since our time there at the property, we have encountered theft and found uses of needles on daily basis. And we have contacted law enforcement on various occasions. During the 15 years of my family, that, during the 15 years of my family has come to know the community, and we personally do not believe that the Dollar General will cause any negative effect on our community. The arguments against this project are all based on hypothetical situations. If anything, we will create a healthy competition, will pressure the local to create safer traffic control for the community, will increase local economy, and create job opportunities.
Thank you. They do not, and just for reference, you do not have to state your name in a public Are there any other proponents that would like to speak in favor of the project? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for project opponents to come forward, please.
My name's Chuck Keel. I oppose the Columbia Dollar General store. When so many citizens demand that its construction be stopped, it should be stopped. The supervisors should act in accordance with the wishes of the citizens of Columbia, not outside money interests. Consider the board's proposed revised general plan, which makes future public input nearly impossible, giving developers a free hand. Our board's revised general plan would allow a Dollar General to be built without citizen input, while eliminating the rights of citizens to fight what is not in their best interest. If the board approves Dollar General in Columbia, we should replace them with supervisors who are responsible to the people of Tuolumne County. Not, not the citizens of Tennessee. The proposed, the proposed general plan should be rejected, and so should the Columbia Dollar General store.
Hello, thank you for giving us all the opportunity to share our views. My name is Bruce Meisner. My family has owned and operated the 49er RV Ranch about a half mile north of the state park for over 35 years. And during that time, we've had campers come literally from around the world. And the one thing that they love about coming to Columbia is stepping back in time, seeing the historical nature of the town. And on top of that, a lot of people that come up here regularly from Modesto or Turlock, they love coming up here to get away from the homogeneous businesses that they see every day in their hometown. They love coming to the mom and pop businesses up here that sometimes may be a little backwards around you, but it, some of the campers have told me it reminds them of going to Mayberry on the Andy Griffith Show. So I want to do everything that we can to preserve that feeling, to keep the small community feeling that people come here for, because I'm afraid that if we lose that, then we're going to lose the attractive nature that brings the outside tourists here. I do want to thank Dollar General for making an attempt to go from their, you know, square box to try to make it fit in here. And I remember earlier meetings, they did say that it was just going to be cost prohibitive for them to make it fit the requirements of the planning commission. And I do want to commend them on the effort they've given, but unfortunately, it's, in my opinion, just going to look like a movie set and not one of the historical buildings down here. So in closing, I just want to say that I do know mistakes have been made in the past along the corridor, but I don't think that's any reason to repeat any mistakes, that we should do what we think is right to move forward and not repeat past mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Watson. I've worked as a street musician in Columbia for 20 years. During that time, people have come up to me to say, "I remember you from when my parents brought me here when I was a kid, and now I'm here with my kids." Another thing people say is, "We like the area." My sister from Indiana said, "The area has a nice feel." For the sake of our economy, we need to be careful with this feeling of Columbia as a small town in the country that can give a respite from modern life. The proposed Dollar General building is big, it's tall, it's awkward, it's going to stick out. In appearance, it could be the anchor store for a de facto strip mall along Parrot's Ferry Road. Like what we see in strip malls everywhere, it's a low-cost building with some doodads and gougas tacked on to a facade to suggest a theme. Not every visitor will notice that the architect specified cost-efficient king-size brick, instead of the smaller standard size that better matches the brick used in Columbia. But visitors will see the fake shutters and the fake iron doors, and they will know this building for what it is, a phony misfit. And it may well remind them of places they would rather not think about. And we can imagine them telling their friends how disappointed they were to see that building there in Columbia. For them, the unique and precious jewel, which is Columbia, will have lost some of its luster because of damage to the setting. This project is bad for business. It lessens the quality of what we have to offer. It erodes our competitive edge, and it harms our word-of-mouth reputation. For economic opportunity, we're better off without it. It should not be approved. I thank you.
Hello, my name is Brooklyn McSperon, and I work at the blacksmith shop. I'm speaking today because of the Dollar General. If we put a Dollar General here, it's only leading to a disaster. Say you put one small thing here, and it leads on and on and on, we will be in another San Francisco. It's like when the car was invented, the horses were used less. Then the light bulb was invented, and the candle was used less. So if there is a Dollar General here, this town will be useless. I will not step foot in your Dollar General store. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, there are three cardinal rules to retail: location, 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 and this one could not be worse. I'm Joe Roderfer, a member of the Columbia School Board. The entire board really wanted to be here, but my fellow board members are over in Room Nine conducting our monthly meeting. When this was first brought to our attention, our board sent a letter strongly opposing the Dollar General store, or as I like to call it, Injuries R Us. You're going to hear many reasons tonight why this location is a terrible idea. You're going to hear many reasons tonight why this location is a terrible idea, but our concern is a safety issue that Mr. Dill referred to. The newspaper this morning said the proposed store is a quarter of a mile from here. According to my odometer, it's two tenths of a mile. Either way, it's way too close to an elementary school. There are kids walking along that road all the time. The Planning Commission meeting, their engineer explained to us what the Dollar General's peak hours were, and funny thing, they happened to coincide to exactly the same time that the school traffic is the heaviest. So, combine heavy school traffic and students, staff, with people darting in and out of Dollar General, that's a disaster waiting to happen. I'm very familiar with this intersection since I live about a quarter of a mile from it, and I'm also a vendor in the farmery at the airport. It's a hinky-hunk of road already, everybody's discussed that, and adding that traffic is only going to make it worse. The traffic study slash plan that I originally saw had no provisions for side walks or cross walks. Apparently, that's been modified. But more importantly, their conspicuous absence, I think, speaks to an attitude on Dollar General's part. It speaks volumes about the obliviousness to and the disregard for the reality of that area. That's not a good neighbor candidate. There are several requirements that this project has to be consistent with, and I would add one more common sense, and I think that's what the Planning Commission agreed with. So whatever redeeming features another Dollar General might have for our county, I think they are heavily overridden by the downsides of this store at this location, and I would ask you to please uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
Hello, I spoke at the last meeting about the Dollar General, and I stand by what I said then. I would like to point out, though, why are the traffic infrastructure improvements, why do they hinge on there being the new Dollar General here? It seems very necessary that they be put in place in any case. That's really all I have to say right now.
Hello, my name is Don Morrison. I'm speaking against Dollar General. I see no point that we need three or five Dollar Generals in this small rural county. If you've been following the paper recently, you will see that Walmart is abandoning anywhere from a hundred and fifty to up to five hundred stores, mostly through the Midwest and small towns. That leaves the town, after Walmart has been there, generally without another store. One in Texas was on the news a few days ago where the guy who owns the store said he won't even open it again. He can't afford it. So the town now is left basically with nothing. They have a big, empty building. And another question would be, is Dollar General going to have off-sale alcohol? Or do they generally, I don't know, I've never been in one. Closing up, I think Dollar General is a project that is being put in simply for the sake of building. And I don't think that's good. That's sort of the ideology of the cancer cell. Build, develop, and die. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Mary Rich of the Topeka Heritage Committee. The Topeka Heritage Committee believes you have a legal responsibility to uphold the Planning Commission's decision on the Dollar General store in Columbia. We ask you not to overturn their ruling because you would irrevocably compromise Columbia's community identity as defined in the general plan and give a green light to sprawl in inappropriate buildings that would spoil the area around Columbia State Historic Park. Section seventeen point six eight point one hundred of the county ordinance code requires well-designed commercial buildings for the site involved. Dollar General's Plano, Texas architect has produced a building that is comprised of two exterior walls that resemble hangars at Columbia Airport, and two other walls that look like two blocks of a Hollywood set that were run through an industrial-sized trash compactor. This, this, this isn't, this isn't architecture, it isn't even design. It is a structural freak and a blight on the lovely old face of Columbia. The exterior design fails to comply with the Columbia Design Guidelines, the Columbia Area Plan in the general plan, and the community identity element also in the general plan. The landscaping plan also fails the general plan test. Ponderosa Pines, a defining feature of Columbia, would be cut down and not replaced, and other vegetation not typical of the area would be introduced. As for the signage, who, extra signage, who needs it? Parrot's Ferry Road is a country road, not suited for freeway-style signage. Please also deny the conditional use permit that would add to the disfigurement of a road the general plan considers eligible for heritage corridor status. As you consider Dollar General's appeal, please keep in mind that the gateway to the park deserves to be protected from garish, modern, and inappropriate buildings and signs that distract from the visitor's trip back into time, and local residents be held pride of place. Please pay no attention to the siren song of the potential tax dollars trotted out by developers with poorly planned projects. Columbia's ambience and history are priceless. She is the gem of the southern mines and not a cash register for a Tennessee company.
My name is Ken Valenta. I have three children between the age of eighteen and thirty years old. Jobs in this community is a real hard thing to come by, especially a decent job. Most of these businesses in this area, Columbia area, are owner-operated sole proprietor businesses. Struggling, as you know, they struggle in this community, a lot of them don't make it even through the winter season because it's very difficult. Bringing in a corporation store and putting it right in the middle of the heart of this community, right here in Columbia, this is its own little community, needs to remain mom-and-pop stores. This will hurt other businesses that are already here. It provides no meaningful employment to the people of Topeka County. These are jobs like at Walmart from a big corporation, they're a go-nowhere job. We don't need those kind of jobs. We need sole proprietors. By bringing in this corporation, we are hurting other people that want to start up mom-and-pop stores because now they have to compete with the buying power of a corporation. Wrong. That doesn't belong here, too close to the park. If they want to do this, fine, take it to the end of Parrot's Ferry Road. I'm good with that, maybe other people aren't. But there's a nice commercial development they've been trying down there, it's far enough away from the park, please, take it down there. As you can see, the people of this community are not welcoming the Dollar General store this close to the state park, which is the blood of this community, why people retired, like myself, a retired contractor, came up here. Why did I ask where the development company was? Because it's from Texas. Probably provides little or no jobs, even in the construction of the building. Again, back to jobs. What can we do to employ people in our community? My children had to move. Santa Clara, Palo Alto, they had to leave. Now I have to drive hours to go visit my own children and my own grandchildren. No, please. I know you guys have a hard job, and it really sounds like they're prepared to attorney up and sue us now. Hello, we're the little community, we're going to get sued by the big corporations so they can stick their eyesore in the middle of where we don't want them. Look around behind you, please. We don't want your store here. Thank you.
Just one second. Sir, one second, please. There's a gray Dodge Durango, license C A T zero two zero, that's blocking a couple vehicles that are trying to leave. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Robert Baker. I've been a resident of Columbia since nineteen seventy-eight. I don't know how closely you have reviewed the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, so I'll start with this statement with a brief review. There is overwhelming evidence to deny this project based on the legality or lack thereof relative to the county's general plan. Approving this project at this location without proper traffic mitigation shows a complete lack of common sense. We have all heard how Dollar General is paying their share of fees. Unfortunately, their share does nothing to solve the problems inherent with that location. Out-of-state corporate interest will get what they want, but we will be left with a costly, dangerous traffic mess that the county will never be able to resolve. The county can't afford to take care of the existing roads, how are they going to come up with well over a million dollars to properly realign that intersection? With regards to property rights, let me remind you that no property owner has unbridled rights to do whatever they please on any parcel in this county. I'm quite sure that Springfield Estates is owned mobile exclusion, and why is that? Because single-wide mobile homes don't belong in a neighborhood filled with thirty-five-hundred square-foot homes, just like the county's general plan says that a business like Dollar General does not fit in with Columbia community. Enough about the legal aspects, let's look at this from a moral and ethical point of view. How is it that you can look yourself in the mirror after approving a retail outlet that sells tainted products? The level of toxic substance in a number of Dollar General products far exceeds safe levels set by the FDA. You need to do your homework because what I'm saying is documented fact. By bowing down to this type of corporate greed and irresponsibility, you are selling out the very people that elected you. So what we're really looking at here is a store that sells imported cheap items, substandard food, Costa County taxpayers, traffic congestion, and safety issues, all while being detrimental to existing businesses both in and out of the state park, as well as diminishing our community integrity. I'm asking you to use some common sense to not allow this project that is ethically bankrupt. Let me remind you that as a supervisor, you are supposed to represent the desires of this community. If you do not represent our will, you can bet that we, the people, will do our very best to make sure that you never again have that opportunity. Finally, Carl Roderfer. If there is not a law or ordinance on the books making it a crime for you to vote, then you need to vote. Just because you accidentally signed a petition is not a valid excuse for not voting. At the very least, you need to tell us how you would vote and be a part of this process because how you vote tonight is going to determine how the people in your district vote in the future. Thank you for discussing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hart Drobisch. I run a business out at the airport, Courtney Aviation. And tonight, I'm looking at this group and I'm saying, "A common sense says a community somehow has a right to be able to exercise and influence on what kind of business comes in." There's been a lot of things said which indicate that it's not in compliance or in conformity with the intent and want of the Columbia Area Plan. Obviously, the community has issues with it, so if you take and look at what do you have to gain, what do you have to lose with a circumstance? We look at the fact that basically a store coming in for retail, as opposed to something like, say, a manufacturing facility which takes raw materials, puts it together, adds value, and then sells it, bringing money back in. A retail-type business such as this is like a funnel which takes the money from the community and funnels it out. And as you look at the impact of, you look at the impact of a chain store on a community, coming from Institute for Local Self-Reliance, this was from two thousand, it says, "Chain store proliferation has weakened local economies, corroded community character, impoverished civic and cultural life." And that was sixteen years ago, and it continues. The US government, in a study in the last two thousand thirteen to fourteen, identified the fact that the disparity between those with money and those with less is increasing, and there's a significantly proportional increase in the number of dollar-type stores, Dollar General being one. Obviously, this indicates that a need or an opportunity to, what, extract from the lesser income component in our country. And obviously, coming in here, bringing cheap products that are going to break and cause you to respend is not necessarily helping the people of the community. Additionally, if you look at the fact that there's a great cost, even if chain stores do save us a few dollars now and again, it's a great cost. Chain stores contribute less to the economy than independent businesses. When you look at the multiplier effect of the dollars spent locally, it's one-eighth for a chain store, and it's about one-half for the value to the rest of the community. So, in terms of value for economy, it's not there. The money's going away, the taxes are going to stay in our own community anyway. We need to make consideration for the fact that in this community, there's a heart. It's pretty well represented by this community here. Somewhere, there's a center, which by common sense says, "We don't need to change the character with that kind of a store, regardless of what's in it or how it looks." The general effect, as I believe John spoke so well, is of reducing the rural character and coming back to another place and time and a community that's small and has integrity. And I would encourage you to turn down the proposal for this project. Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors and county staff. I'm Beetle Barber. I've lived in Columbia for thirty-eight years, and I am really proud to be a part of this community. You can see that we're very passionate people, and I think that's a good thing. I'm not sure that we all completely understand each other. You may be looking out at us and thinking that there's a big no-growth component here. I've talked to you before about growth, and you know that I do support growth, and I don't think that the majority of the people here are opposed to growth. I think we understand the arguments about needing economic progress in this county. The misunderstanding may be occurring on the other side, too, because people in this audience may be looking at you and thinking that all you think about is the almighty dollar, which is basically translates into economic health for the county, and also the idea that we need to have private property rights overriding everything. And you know, that is a core value. That is something that I know you need to consider seriously. I've been in your chambers many different times, and I've heard your decision-making process, and I have confidence that you will decide the right thing. It's a tough decision, but I'll tell you something that is not a tough decision. Take a look at the Dollar General flyer. You know, we've spent the last two or three years working with public health departments in a couple of different counties to help wean young children away from two-liter sugary beverages and the other things that are represented in this flyer. I was really surprised when this came out in the local paper because I thought maybe they would put their best foot forward. If this is their best foot, our children don't need this, and we can all agree on that. Thank you.
My name is Ashwin Modi. I am the owner of R&amp;L. The subject property has non-contamination. The third tank is not found yet, and still not a single well is driven to test underwater, underground water, while in R&amp;L, we have about twelve wells driven with no contamination found above the legal limit. Still, state wants to drill some more well. So I believe this land has a lot of contamination, and that's why California State Department, Water Department, has not cleared this land for use. If approved, nobody can stop me to bring family dollar. I will bring family dollar here, and they will love to come because they did not accept Dollar General offer. If the two-hundred-and-thirty square feet of sign is above the legal limit of one-hundred-and-thirty square feet allowed, if approved, I will apply for bigger sign, and very soon, the historic Columbia town will become history with full of signs and square buildings. Under County Ordinance Section seventeen point six eight one hundred, the commission had legal grounds to deny the site development, but county did not. Board of Supervisor has to answer that question. Under Section seventeen point six eight one twenty, parking next to the Parrot's Ferry Road is not in the Columbia Design Guidelines. So to approve the Dollar General, first we have to change the Columbia Design Guidelines before we can allow any kind of construction. I believe that Dollar General will bring a very bad name to Columbia, and very soon, historic Columbia will disappear in the market. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us. My name is Lynn Lewis. I'm a relative newcomer here. I've only been in this county, in this town, for about three years now. My mother built a home up here on twenty acres about twelve years ago. I have seen our property value drop from five-hundred thousand dollars to three-hundred thousand dollars since then. thousand dollars since then. I also see if we bring in more low-income housing, more low-income buildings, more low-income businesses, I see my property value going down as well. I am not, as well as many of these other people, anti-growth. Quite the opposite. I'm pro-growth because I want to see my property values go on. However, there's a difference between smart growth and, well, not really looking at the future growth. There will be many people before me and many more after me that are much more eloquent and will give you legal reasons that you can legally turn this down. One of the things I want you to think about is my child here and the many other children that go to the school, and the traffic mitigation. Are you doing it at the same time? Are they going to make mitigations to the traffic or the danger to my child at the same time the store's being built? Or is it going to be a month, or two, or twenty years down the road? I understand there is no funding for that. I also don't believe that putting a traffic light right, let traffic light right there will mitigate the traffic. I think if you look at studies, you will find that it actually increases the traffic. Quite honestly, there's several children that are going to try and cross that street and go over to that cheap candy store, and you're going to have a death on your hands, okay? I'm afraid for it. I want to see our community grow. I want to see it grow intelligently. I want to see our children have something, but here's the one thing I said last time, too. Show my daughter that democracy works. You see all the people here that are against it. I don't know, are there any of you supervisors that live in this town? And is this your priority? I don't think so, but it is ours. So please show my daughter that democracy works, that the many have a say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Kirk. I've been a longtime resident of Columbia. I've seen a lot of changes throughout the county, some good, some bad, and some of you do know me up there. The corridor leading into Columbia State Park has very few commercially zoned properties that remain vacant. Proposed developments should be in compliance with Columbia Community Plan Policy Goal 15.8.8. Protect and improve the scenic quality along Parrot's Ferry Road corridor as a gateway to our beautiful Columbia State Historic Park. A Dollar General store or any other large or small box store will not improve the scenic quality of the corridor. No matter how the developer tries to make it look old-fashioned, the trademark sign of the Dollar General will still be excessively large on the road, look just like every other Dollar General store anywhere in California, or I guess even outside of California. Tourists come to our state park for that special historical small-town feel and all the qualities that it has to offer. The stagecoach, the old-fashioned candy store, things that they cannot get in their local town. A Dollar General store would be strapped from their experience of the encounter of something unique and different from their own hometowns. It has been said in a previous election, you can put lipstick on, and I won't have to finish it, but it's still not going to fit in our community. Columbia State Park depends on tourism, and the CCP Implementation Program 15.C.E. support the Columbia business community in their efforts to promote tourist industries in and around our historic State Park. A Dollar General store is not a tourist-related business and cannot see, and I cannot see how you can mitigate or justify this program away. I can go on and list many other items that the Dollar General proposal would not be, not only be a bad decision by the people we have voted in to represent our interest, but it also goes against many policies and programs of the community plan. I'm sure that you can see by now clearly, or you can see now clearly, and are aware of our concerns for Columbia. I also would like to speak to the fact that we have a Dollar General store within ten minutes of Columbia. I really take it personal that the proponents for this building think that we are not capable, if we wanted to shop at a Dollar General store, we could not drive to Jamestown. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Baylen. On December sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the planning commissioners heard the arguments and voted five-two to deny this project. Commissioner John Latour stated it simply, "Columbia's special." California, I mean Columbia is California's best example of a rural, rustic, and spirited living historic community. Governor Earl Warren summed it up in his nineteen forty-five dedication speech, "There is no place in California that is more truly Californian." From the park's creation, state and county officials worried that encroachment along the park's scenic corridors could cheapen and devalue Columbia's a living California legacy. Fifty years ago, state officials pointed to the need for zoning protection to make certain future growth is not compromised by a carnival-like atmosphere created by private interests to exploit the increasing number of park visitors at the expense of undermining the historical foundation of the park. That was Modesto B. nineteen sixty-five. How did we move so far away from taking care of the jewel in its setting to a point where nine-thousand-one-hundred-square-foot corporate retail project with seventy-nine conditions would not have an impact on the park as a living historic community? The answer lies in the Cross Developments slide presentation shown at the Planning Commission hearing. It was a driving tour of Parrot's Ferry Road. Each slide was staged to show an unflattering image of the corridor, clutter, asphalt, commercialism, and their collective visual impact. All the unflattering examples and none of the good examples adhereance to the design guidelines like the Columbia Village Town Homes and Columbia Nursery. The message was one of ridicule, of course, but the point was this, "If you don't care, why should we? If you don't care and take your design guidelines seriously, why should we?" Ironically, the PowerPoint was actually saying, "See, cumulative impacts do add up. Projects like the Dollar General do add up and will slowly convert the historic experience if we are not careful." Let's not put ourselves in this situation again. Please support the Planning Commissioner's decision and the findings that this project is not consistent with the Columbia Community Plan, whose mandate is to preserve and enhance the community identity, including Columbia's rural, small-town atmosphere. Let's not continue down the path of undermining the historical foundation of the park. Instead, let's uphold the spirit of its visionaries, who in creating this park challenged us to protect its significance on behalf of the state of California and beyond. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Lipscomb. I've been living in Columbia for most of my life. The Dollar General's report states that they are going to have no bigger impact on the TED system than a single-family dwelling. That's a pretty big family dwelling. In the report, they don't allot any water for landscaping, which is part of their plan, so they're going to rely on the rain for their landscaping, and it's just going to be dead and dry and ugly the rest of the time, because they have not allotted any water to water their landscaping, and they have no water allocated to janitorial. I'm hoping that they will at least spend twenty gallons of water a day to mop their massive floors. If they're going to have a store, they at least need to be clean. There are other infrastructure problems, and you've heard all of the historical problems. You realize that we don't want this store in our community, and if they are so willing to conjure up non-facts about their water usage, what else are they conjuring? Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Russell Tate, and I live next door. My concerns are the traffic. I worked for the largest tow company in this county for twenty-five years as a supervisor and a tow operator, and at that time, there were two other companies on rotation. I have worked one truck fatal on Springfield Road, and I've worked one truck rental in that general area of the three intersections, and this was, I've been retired for ten years. The traffic had to increase since then, and I don't have any current statistics. Okay? Quite a few of the accidents were severe. Some were fender benders. There has to be, at this time, more increased traffic. Everybody that drives the road knows that. The entrance to the Columbia Historical Area, I defer to a lot of the other good people here that are testifying tonight. The impact to the couple that operate the mini-mart next door, that sell some of the items that this store would sell, and also my neighbor that has just started a new business, the market, Cottage Market, next to the post office. And I understand that the way the impact fees or the road service fees are set up, I don't think that, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars is a very fair share. This county, if, and when the road work possibly gets done, if this is voted in, is going to cost the taxpayers buku money. I mean, a lot. The truck traffic from the mine line off of Parrot's Ferry Road is over a hundred trucks a day, and that's coming in and going out. Not all of them, but a very good portion of them. It shakes the house I rent and live in every time one goes by. We're just lucky we haven't had, with the, you know, conditions of the road and the traffic, that we haven't had any fatalities with a big rig. I have to come in there, drivers that come into this area, and that particular business supplies a lot of good jobs to this county, well-paying jobs. Like I said, the road work is going to, you know, cost a lot of the taxpayers an awful lot of money if you approve this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marty Olson. I believe I speak for most people here when I say I'm pro-business. My dad owned a meat market in the Santa Cruz Mountains. He joined with his friend who owned a grocery store, and they created what they called a supermarket. The winters were slow, but the summers were busy with tourists. Theirs was an independent store that appealed to visitors from the Bay Area who came to spend the summers in their cabins. It was part of the charm of the area. Does that sound familiar? We've all seen the Dollar Generals in Jamestown and Salisburyville. These are small box chain stores that shout out to us as we drive by. You can't miss them. That's the idea. The numbers of these stores is amazing. There are twelve thousand in the US and growing. Currently, there are a hundred and forty-seven in California. Three in Merced, three in Sacramento, three in Manteca, four in Visalia, five in Stockton, six in Modesto, six in Fresno, eight in Turlock, and nine in Bakersfield. Where are the stores in the rest of the United States? New Orleans has fifteen Dollar General stores. Dallas, Texas, fifteen. St. Louis, Missouri, fifteen. Columbus, Ohio, fifteen. Nashville, Tennessee, fifteen. Are we beginning to see a trend here? Dollar General at the entrance to our state historic park is an abomination. Do you want that abomination to be part of your legacy? Please say no.
I'm Jim Olson. I live up the hill here. Yeah, a hundred and forty-seven stores in California, in patches between three and eight, in small towns and large, it seems like a virus. Could mosquitoes be involved? I think not. Or let us be the vaccine. Let the virus spread to our community. We live up on Telegraph Hill. We overlook the old Columbia Schoolhouse and Cemetery, which are visible from the edge of our property. We've been there fifteen years. We, my wife and I, were privileged once again back in December to join the Columbia community to celebrate the holidays. We gathered for the potluck dinner that comes together each year simply because local residents talk to each other and agreed to contribute a dish. There are no formal invitations. People just know the date and time of the gathering. Columbia's merchants contribute raffle items with the local Chamber of Commerce's urgent leadership. It seems that all Columbia merchants were represented at the dinner. The only outsider-owned entities represented were our own post office employees. The point is, at this time, Columbia is an uncommon community that hosts no outside corporate giant in its historic area. People know each other and are comfortable with the unique status of their town as a state park that preserves history, you can see, but also a history in the sense of the present small-community spirit that must have been alive when the park was created. Will Mr. Rick Dryling, CEO of Dollar General, controlling nearly twelve thousand stores in forty-three states, join us in our celebration of community on December fourteenth, twenty-sixteen? Let us keep Columbia historic. Let us not invite a corporation to locate one with more than twelve thousand branches at this highly visible crossroads. The first visual impression of visitors to this unique historical area must not be one of just another corporate box similar to those that mark the entrances to so many American towns that lack Columbia's distinction. Keep Columbia historic. Thank you.
I'm Janet Russell. I am speaking because as you are weighing out the economics of having a store like Dollar General, even if not Dollar General specifically, but any kind of a store of that nature in that location, comparing that with the economic effect on the rest of the community. What we have to sell here in Columbia is history. Anything that damages the history is going to damage the core business of Columbia. It is not worth damaging the core of Columbia for anything that is essentially large and chain store. The developer mentioned that the stores in Jamestown and Salisburyville have not damaged those communities, and I would agree, but those communities, those locations had excellent traffic areas. There were no issues with having to do major two-million-dollar renovations for a company to be there, and they did not have a lot of pedestrian traffic, so you didn't have to worry about kids getting hit or people who live in the mobile home parks getting hit, who are also walking around in that area. As you're considering the economics of it, I think that it would make more sense to support the Planning Commission's decision.
Hello, my name is Pam Connors, and the Union Democrat, if you read the paper this morning, characterized the community's meeting tonight as pitting preservation-leaning locals who want to retain a town's rustic, gold rush persona against business-minded people who emphasize jobs, growth, and economic development. And as a lot of the people who've already spoken to you have said, my guess is that very few-to-know people in this room are really against business, jobs, economic growth, or development. Instead, I think many of us know a Dollar General would be a blow to the core character of the town, a distinct character that is the major economic foundation for Columbia. Perhaps if we shift the context to my zip code, because I live Perhaps if we shift the context to my zip code, because I live in Sonora, it can illustrate my point. Remember when the 7-Eleven convenience store was built at the north end of downtown, across the street from the Red Church? There was a lot of contention about that. And a 7-Eleven was ultimately allowed to build its store, and among the provisions meant to soften the incongruity of such a store at the north gateway to historic downtown Sonora were tamed exterior lighting and a frontier facade. For its own reasons, 7-Eleven's parent corporation eventually abandoned the Sonora store after just a few years of operation. But especially once it was built, people knew that although lighting and a frontier facade softened the out-of-place visual effect of the company's original proposal, the mitigations just couldn't make a 7-Eleven belong at that location. Like a dollar store in Columbia, opposition to the 7-Eleven was not against commercial enterprise at all. Instead, it was against a particular kind of enterprise that was disconnected from the goals of a community struggling to identify and preserve the character of its historic areas that are, by their nature, always dwindling and always at risk. We want enterprise that supports and enriches Columbia's economic and social vitality rather than chipping away at it. I believe a vote against dollar store in Columbia is a vote for Columbia as a unique, distinctive community that values its historic qualities and works to harmonize its economic development with them. Please vote against the dollar store in Columbia. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pat Conner, otherwise known as Mark Twain. I've been known to portray Mark Twain on occasion, even in Columbia, and I've haunted these, well, I've haunted these canyons surrounding Columbia since 1983, especially in the Mormon Creek area. Now, I'm going to implore, and I'm speaking tonight on the behalf of Mr. Clemmons. I feel I can speak for him, I've done it many times. I implore you to vote this project down. This is why. This project will interrupt the historic gold rush ambience of Columbia. Columbia, there's only one Columbia. There are thousands of Dollar Generals. In fact, they're building 600 this year. They're building one about every six hours. There's no shortage of Dollar Generals. Columbia is unique in its gold rush character, and that is the economic bread and butter of Tuolumne County. It's the bread and butter of small business owners right here in this community. It is the custom culture and lifestyle of the people who live here. Now, you can look around this room and you can see plainly, the people don't want this store. They don't want it. Now, this evening, this evening's vote will be a touchy and a very dicey situation. It's a tough vote. It's free enterprise versus the community. Now, I am for free enterprise, but I'm not for free-for-all enterprise. And you know, you know, all of that profit is going to go to Tennessee. Now, I'm not against Tennessee, they make some damn good whiskey in Tennessee. But it's not for us in Columbia, not here. So this evening, I would say this vote has to be taken carefully, very carefully. Otherwise, you may just end up with Mark Twain running for county supervisor. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Jim Malipsko. I'm a native Tuolumne County, of Tuolumne County. I've lived in Columbia since 1980 after I came back from the military. I moved to Columbia because of the historic state park and the lack of urban sprawl that was happening everywhere else in the county. Right now, we have the Dollar General in Salisburyville, we have the Dollar Tree in the junction, we have the 99 cent store next to Orchard in Sonora, we have the Dollar Tree or Dollar General in Jamestown. How many of those do we need in the county? Don't we have enough of the small businesses that have been driven out by corporate greed? Are you guys going to let corporate take over the whole county, including Columbia? We don't want them there, we don't need them here.
I don't know if you've noticed, I am a docent at Columbia State Historic Park and one of the better-dressed docents. Most of my points have already been covered, so I'd just like to go over a few things. You know, we do have our own gold mine sitting right over there. Now, if the state and the county would get together and form a team and support it, we could be as famous as Plymouth Plantation, Sturbridge Village, Colonia Williamsburg, or Sovereign Hill in Australia. And I'd like to have any of you supervisors talk to me about this in downtown Columbia. Now, Sovereign Hill was founded a few years after our gold rush in 1851 in Australia. In the park, they have 350 paid positions and 200 volunteers. What do you think that would do to our economy? It would be amazing, wouldn't it? I'd like to close by, there was a man that supported Tuolumne County and all of California, his name was Hugh Hauser, and he stood at Hauser Lane. What do you think he would do if he found out that there was going to be a Dollar General on Hauser Lane? He'd roll over in his grave. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alan Silver. I'm kind of the new kid on the block here. Many years ago, I started coming up here, I fly, and I've landed at over 230 airports in California and kept coming back to this airport. It's the most pristine airport in the community. And since that time, about three and a half years ago, I decided to move my business up here, and I'm located on the airport. And since that time, I've had so many of my friends, just this week alone, I've had three aircraft fly up here from different destinations, and the one comment is, we come here because it's a destination, it's historic, they walk the historic trail by the school, they walk down Airport Road, and that's the last thing they want to see is a Dollar General. They come back and they said, "I can't believe what I've seen in this town." And it's not uncommon for weeks later that they come up here with their families to come up here and enjoy this historic park of this beautiful, beautiful area, and it is pristine, and I hope as elected officials to represent the people that you will do so. Thank you.
I'm Alex Jedekin, and I spoke in December. I've done a little bit of research since then, and one of the more important things that I found was that in 2014, the Dollar General store wanted to put in a new store in Kelseyville. Now, I don't know if all three of you are aware, but the planning commission, the planning commission denied that project. And of course, Dollar General, well, the Texas-based firm, Texas-based corporation actually, was the one that appealed. The result of that was one or more of the county supervisors recused themselves, that sounds familiar. And at the end of the night, they, they denied the project. The Board of Supervisors denied the project. Why? And this is almost a mirror image of what we're hearing here. Of course, there was traffic issues, there was a school, okay? And the bigger factor, the heavier, the heavy factor was, the people said, in that community, the people said, "This does not represent the character of our community." And that was hard to get to, as far as, as far as, you know, researching and, you know, Googling and so forth, I was getting pretty frustrated, but that was a piece of information that, first of all, shocked me, and you people, I think, are looking at me, and I think that's a piece of information you could carry forth, carry forth here. I talked, I talked about the Alamo the last time. How close did, how close did they put a Dollar General store next to the Alamo in Texas? Okay? Just for a piece of trivia, they were able to get within six tenths of a mile of the So, corporate, corporate rights are very strong in Texas. And that's what this is really about, is corporate rights versus, versus community rights and home rule.
My name is Joe Sparania, and I'm with the Tuolumne County Historical Society, and I'm the chairman of the Landmarks Committee. And we're blessed to have two state historic parks in Tuolumne County. I'm a docent at Railtown 1897, been there for now, 20 years, and I meet and greet people on every weekend, and they ask me, "Where's the next place we should go see?" if they come to Railtown first. A lot of them are for, people are from Europe, Australia, England, all places in the world. And everybody remembers the gold rush, and we have the crown jewel of the gold rush here in Columbia. And because you're going to be facing a hard decision here, I've been here 20 years now, and we used to have seven planning commissions, and it got reduced down to two. There's the Tuolumne County Planning Commission and the City of Sonora Planning Commission. And I came here last time in the grueling insument of what you're seeing here again tonight. It's totally a bad dream, and I feel for you, but I would not like to see you guys change the decision of your planning commission, because they did a very fine job of reviewing this project, and I know what they do because we do it with the Historical Society Landmarks Committee. We volunteer our time to help you guys make good decisions. So I'm calling on you to make the right decision tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors. I'm George Cigarelli, and along with my son Chris and daughter-in-law are the newest business to open in Columbia State Park. That's the City Hotel Restaurant. Actually, it's an old business, but we're the new business operators there. One thing that has impressed us is the feeling of community and pride people have for this area. You have heard tonight many reasons why you have valid evidence to deny this appeal, but I have another thought for you. Many of you know me as past director of the Tuolumne County Chamber of Commerce, and for many years I was champion of the free market concept and economic capitalism that has made this country the greatest in the world. And I still am. However, I also learned, sometimes bumping up against my free market beliefs, that community has to play an important role in these considerations of free market. Once again, I have run head-on into this dilemma. Why? Because of the passion of the people you have heard here tonight. Their plea to maintain the historic atmosphere of their community. Community is defined as a unified body of individuals, the people with common interests living in a particular area, an interacting population of various kinds of individuals in a common location, and in this case, a common cause. And so once again, we have free market challenging community. Those of us who are elected to serve the people have the responsibility to balance these kinds of challenges. I urge you to come down on the side of community. With a Dollar General store only 10 minutes from the proposed Columbia location, I can't imagine that there is a dire need for another store in our historic setting. With two stores already in operation and more proposed for the county, I have to ask when enough is enough. Does a corporate entity located somewhere in Texas or Tennessee, wherever they are, know better what is best for the community to build in a controversial area? I submit to you, they don't care. But the community does, and would hope you side with them, uphold your planning commission decision, and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mark Boyd, I'm a Columbia College graduate and a frequent visitor of Columbia State Park. I'd like to focus my comments on the Tuolumne County General Plan and more specifically the Columbia Community Plan. Before I do, I'd like to say that Tuolumne County can be very proud of the thoroughness and the careful evaluation that has gone into its general plan and the update currently underway. As a resident of Calaveras County, I can only wish we had a general plan of such high quality, and it gives me no joy to say that. Your general plan is your guide to land use decisions and provides legal justification to deny a land use proposal that does not conform to stated guidelines. The stated goal of the Columbia Community Plan is to preserve and enhance the community identity of the community area. This proposal fails to meet the primary goal of the Columbia Community Plan. One of the final statements in the introduction to the Columbia Community Plan states, "Considerable territory, considerable resources, and considerable visitors were carefully evaluated to ensure the economic viability and natural beauty of the community of Columbia for years to come." This proposal fails to meet the objective to ensure the economic viability of the Columbia community. I believe this proposal will have a dramatic negative impact on many of the small businesses in the park and the neighboring area, and these businesses play an important role in the historical character and charm of Columbia. It would be heartbreaking to see any of these businesses fall on hard times. So I urge the board to embrace the primary goal of the Columbia Community Plan, to preserve and enhance the Columbia community's identity. Therefore, I urge the board to deny this mitigated negative declaration and ask that you work with the Columbia community to find a more appropriate and more acceptable use of this property. Thank you.
Claire Basely, Columbia Kate's Tea House. I've just celebrated nine years as a part of privately-owned business adjacent to the state park. Two points I wanted to make. One about employment. I believe there are many opportunities for small businesses to start. Even in this area, there are several park concessions available, of which... Even in this area, there are several park concessions available, of which any new business opening would be able to employ people. I'm currently accepting applications. I believe in my nine years as an employer, I've probably given in excess of 50 young people possibly their first job ever. My second point, traffic mitigation. I've recently endured, and along with other businesses in Columbia, roadwork done during a time of year that is one of our primary opportunities to make money. The holiday season had several days where traffic was tied up, making it difficult for businesses that were open during this time to make the best use of good holiday sales. We understand that the roadwork is necessary, and we look forward to increased traffic because the roads have been made nicer. But knowing the kind of mitigation needed for the roads for a business like Dollar General, it is traffic improvement that needs to be done on the Parry's Ferry corridor, but there are things that we can do to improve the traffic and pedestrian use and possibly horseback riding use and bicycle use that could be for our community and not for Dollar General. Because I believe that the kind of road improvement needed for Dollar General would cost in excess of a million, I'm not sure what exactly the proposed amount would be, probably more than a million, paid by taxpayer dollars. I'd like to see those dollars go towards the community. I don't believe that Dollar General's share of $35,000 is really fair, and if our Columbia businesses are going to endure the kind of traffic closures and road slowing, the kind of things that would take quite a while to improve the road for Dollar General, I'd rather spend that time enduring my business to be for the community. Thank you.
My name is Christine Gingrich, and my husband and I moved to Tuolumne County in 1971, and we have lived in Columbia since 1978. And we never wanted to live anywhere else in this county other than Columbia. We live two miles from the park. And I had, two words had been coming to mind to me, and they were the words moral and ethics. So I decided to get my unabridged dictionary and look them up. I looked in my dictionary for the definition of the words moral and ethical. Moral relating to dealing with or capable of making the distinction between right or wrong. To me, the Dollar General poses no moral dilemma. It is wrong to put that monstrosity one half mile from Columbia State Park. Legal, maybe, but since when does legal trump wrong? It does, it never should at any level of government. We, the majority, don't want it. That should be enough of a reason. You are elected to serve us, to listen to our concerns and wishes, not the other way around. What has happened to a moral compass in government by and for the people, not for the owners of the Dollar General? Put up one big box store and more will follow. Soon, our corridor, our beloved historic park, will be an ugly array of signs and large buildings. Gone are the trees. I live just two miles away, and lots of times I go to Columbia Park, especially when there's lots of people there, and I visit with tourists from all over the world, and they are so impressed with how wonderful it is. And it's not just, it's not just a small town. It is a state park. I mean, that's a big deal. I mean, Jamestown, it's on the highway. Salisburyville, it's not near a state park. That must be taken into consideration. It is a beautiful, wonderful community. And it's not just about the people of Columbia wanting this. This is good for the whole state. It's good for people worldwide. It draws in people. It gives them a good impression of California and about our gold rush history. So anyway, I hope you will take that into consideration and look in your hearts and find if this is right or wrong, if this is a moral decision and ethical decision that needs to be made. Thank you.
My name is Joe Opie, and I'm a sixth-generation stakeholder in this community, such as a few of you are. The social and economic impact of this store, one more of three that are, or two that are already existing, one that's in the middle of proposition and possibly more on the way, is going to be devastating to our community. I'm sure you all have thought this over greatly, and even though, I apologize for the young lady who looks at personal gains by selling the property and anybody else who might be selling property to such a company, this has to be what is in the best interest for our entire community. Unfortunately, because of businesses like this, the larger previously privately-owned businesses that were in our community have slowly been dying off, and we've watched this over the last 20 years. I myself remember when Walmart was put in. I'm not personally against Mr. Joe from Cross Construction. But what I will say is that the economic plan of this business is not good for our economic plan as a community. We have many of issues, one of which is that I think Tuolumne County is one of the highest, if not the highest, on the welfare goal for the state. Funny enough, that is one of the stereotypical things that this company looks for when they target a community to put themselves in. I am opposed very strongly to the one in Columbia. I hope no more go in the community. I would also like to suggest that if it's not already in works on the general plan, that in the general plan workup, before you guys sign it in the contract, that you make a note that large box stores from out of the area may come into the area, but not in multiples. Have a great day. (applause)